So I will call this meeting to an end. I have an announcement to make which is related to the agenda for tonight. Originally, the agenda was to include Mr. Sacker's property at 2 Mohawk Avenue. He has asked that we defer that until the April meeting. Moreover, there has been a change in the design of how he wishes to finish the basement at 2 Mohawk. And that difference will be that the bedrooms have been eliminated. The kitchen facility in the basement that had originally been planned has been eliminated. And that space will be used for office and storage. And there will not be a kitchen. And he has been granted a building permit to go ahead with that with the proviso that at no time in the future will the basement have bedrooms or kitchens or something.
Mr. Chairman?
The appeal is of the denial of the one that included the...
Yes, that's still a law.
Okay, and that's what's being appealed, however...
That's what we're going to deal with tonight.
I think it is somewhat confusing. A permit was submitted thereafter, as you mentioned, for no habitation in the basement. That, of course, was approved, and that is underway.
Yes.
And yet, there's an appeal for the prior plan that was denied because it affected our density formula and parking and other features.
Yeah.
It's tough to follow.
Well...
So that's ongoing?
Yes, it's ongoing.
We'll deal with it and then...
There's litigation on the entire premises held in contiguous ownership, these two parcels. And I feel this is part and parcel of it from a secret point of view. And we'll vet that more approaching the next meeting.
So tonight, we have only one issue before us, and that is on the Water Street Cinema. I'm going to ask Kirk, our planner, to clarify the role of this board and the role of the planning board with respect to that.
Yes, as you know, and as many in the audience know, the application is for an area variance for not providing onsite parking. And therefore, that issue, as well as anything that's directly tangential, is part of this appeal process. The lion's share of the review, as well as a State Environmental Quality Review Act determination of significance, as well as a mandatory public hearing, will be held in the near future by the planning board once the zoning board of appeals rules on the parking variance. So return to the planning board where the brunt of the process and all its components are being reviewed.
So this board tonight is restricted to dealing only with the issue of parking. One further clarification, and that is that the matter that was presented at the earlier meeting involved the closing of the hearing, which means that there will be no public input tonight. The other issue which I think should be made clear before we start is that tonight marks the end of the specified period in which the board is supposed to act. Is that 60 or 62 days?
62 days to allow...
62. So we've hit the 62nd day. The action of the board tonight could be one of two actions. It could be to make a decision tonight, or it could be, with agreement from the applicant, to defer a decision for at least one more meeting. So that would be place the issue before us legally in April. We don't have to make that decision now, but at some point, that decision will have to be made. Okay. There is something that has come to me just today that I think is important for you to hear, both the board and those who are present, and Mr. Sacker. This is a note from a resident of Water Street, Greg Burton, who has written extensively to us earlier on this issue, but this is some new stuff. And so I will read it to you. "I am writing to thank you for the time you have spent on the Water Street Cinema application for a variance for relief from the onsite parking requirement of 75 parking spaces. I am the author of 'A Response to the Water Street Cinema's Impact Study and Its Effect on a Neighborhood,' which was the earlier document." That's it, yes. No, no, that's their study.
Oh, that's independent.
Yeah. There was a 23-page document that Greg had submitted earlier, and all of us received "As a professional in the theater industry," he works in New York City in theater, "a retired New Falls firefighter, and a 20-year resident of Wards Avenue, I find that I am uniquely qualified to speak about this issue. And if you read my entire 29-page report, you know I had a few things to say. The following are additional recent observations I made, and I hope you will consider them when you contemplate the parking variance. The Water Street Cinema Traffic Impact Study," here referred to as the study, grossly misrepresented the Highway Capacity Manual's level of service." Level of service means whatever the traffic is.
Oh, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I say one thing here? I think you were in fact opening this to public comment at this point.
No.
And, no, I think you are, because you were in fact reading somebody's public comment that you've already closed off. I want you to continue, but I want you to appreciate that essentially, I think what you're doing is entering new public comment, which you called an end one. Two, we have somebody who has great experience with theater, but does he have any kind of traffic certification? Has he done any traffic measurements? Here you have a certified traffic person who has worked for the Department of Traffic, has all these credentials, and we're listening to someone. I mean, I can write you something about how I feel about the traffic. Would you listen to that equally?
I will tell you, Mr. Sacker, that I checked with counsel concerning the reading of this letter. Counsel assured me that it was appropriate to do that. So I am doing it on advice of counsel. "The Water Street Cinema Traffic Impact Study," the study, grossly misrepresented the Highway Capacity Manual's Level of Service (LOS) rating for the traffic flow when they applied it to the intersections study in their report. The study reported that an LOS, a Level of Service (A), represented the best condition. An LOSC is generally used as a design standard. An LOSD is acceptable during peak periods. An LOSE represents operation at or near capacity. And an LOSF represents the worst condition. But the Highway Capacity Manual actually states LOSA represents free flow. LOSC is stable flow, which means that there'd be a slight delay. LOSD is approaching unstable flow. LOSE is unstable flow, an intolerable delay. And LOSF is forced flow or a jam situation. The impact study gives the intersection of Route 299 and Cheston Street an overall rating of LOSD on a Friday night when the WSC is open. According to the study, the traffic delays will be acceptable during peak periods when in actuality, they will be approaching unstable flow. Furthermore, the northbound traffic at this intersection is at an LOSE rating, which is an unstable flow or an intolerable delay, not operating at or near capacity as reported in the study. At the same time, intersection on a Saturday afternoon, most of the traffic is rated at LOSD, which is approaching intolerable delays and the reported acceptable traffic during peak periods. This sounds like a gross misrepresentation of the facts. Furthermore, the calculations have all cars turning on Main Street from Water Street and Yuguenot at LOSF or jam capacity on Friday nights, Saturday afternoons, and Saturday evenings. This is an unacceptable burden on the community. At the same time, they tell us that Main Street is a free flow LOSA rating. How is it possible to have the best and worst rating at the same intersection? And we all know that Main Street is not free-flowing on weekends. In my report, I show why the estimates used in the impact study are low and why they cannot be reported as worst scenarios, which they are. Even with the low calculations, the study still finds unacceptable traffic conditions produced by the building of the Water Street Cinema, though they try to label it otherwise. Some of the most important facts in my report that I hope you will consider are the lack of a safe drop-off or pickup zone in front of the theater on Main Street. A narrow, there is clearly no room for a car to pull over safely and safely drop off patrons. A narrow sidewalk in front of the theater that can't accommodate any size gathering safely at the main entrance. The entrance at the Water Street Market parking lot is also inadequate for the movie theater. This lot currently does not meet Village Code for aisle widths and will be full during the theater's hours of operation on the weekends. Other theaters noted in the impact study are, report their busiest time as weekend matinees and early evening shows, all within the Water Street Market's operating hours. No safe location to drop off or pick up students arriving in school buses for the education outreach programs that the WSC is planning. All theaters cited in the report have the Hear/See/Feel program for students that the WSC would like to provide. This program is very successful at every venue. All have students arriving by bus throughout the weekend. Inadequate access for fire apparatus to engage in an emergency. The front entrance is narrow and at least 10 feet above street level with a narrow staircase. The rear entrance is at the Water Street Market parking lot, and I doubt the ladder truck and large engines can gain access without the parking lot completely empty. And these are your best access points. I had professional firefighters look at the drawings, including a Fire Department of New York lieutenant, and they all expressed concern about the lack of access to the building. A small lobby, 812 square feet, that would require people to stand outside in all weather when the lobby is at capacity when waiting for a popular movie to start. The Burn Center has a 1,500-square-foot lobby, and patrons have reported that they would have to arrive early on the weekends where they would have to wait in a line up the street after purchasing your tickets before the start of the movie. All the metered parking in New Falls, cited in the study, has a two-hour limit and are inadequate for most independent movies. A two-hour movie would require you to park five minutes before the movie starts or risk a parking fine. The underreporting or the misrepresented facts in the study, the LOS rating as stated above, the counting of one car making one turn and finding parking as the base for counting cars, their use of 66 arriving for a show and calling it worst-case scenario, the claim that Wards Avenue is 30 feet wide when it is actually 22 feet wide, the underreporting of the traffic, parking, and parking impact on Wards Avenue, which has the closest legal free parking to the theater, the lack of real-world scenario that includes cars that fail to find parking at Water Street Market and re-enter the traffic flow and circle the block for parking, parking history problems in the village that are worsening in the current changes that decrease the number of available present-day spaces. What was omitted from the study? The blind curve in the road at the peak of Wards Avenue, a traffic study and the impact on the Fourth Street, Mohawk Avenue, that makes up the block where the Water Street Cinema is located. Mohawk Avenue's lack of pedestrian sidewalks and crosswalks and current safety issues, the study of all pedestrian traffic coming from the college campus that will travel on Mohawk Avenue on their way to the WSC, the dangerous turn in both directions at the intersection of Mohawk Avenue and Water Street. This is arguably the most dangerous intersection in New Falls, and no mention was made in the study of this or the effect that the WSC would have on this already dangerous design. All of this and more are elaborated in my letter to you in response to the Water Street Cinema's impact study. The study states it was the conclusion of the detailed extensive study that the proposed Water Street Cinema will not have a negative impact on the operation of the village's infrastructure nor will it overtax its parking supply either onsite and offsite. I conclude the WSC traffic impact study is inaccurate, misleading, and in one case has altered an official document to make their case. Even so, you look at the data in their own impact study, you will include that the traffic and parking issues created by the cinema do have a large negative impact, and therefore, a variance on the required 75 onsite parking spaces should not be allowed. The Water Street Cinema is a residential property that has a residential district running along the east side of the building. The parking, traffic, and safety impact on Wards and Mohawk Avenue will change the neighborhood permanently. If this is not the definition of an undesirable change that will be created by the granting of a variance, I do not know what is. Furthermore, since the impact study used well below capacity numbers to prove their case and failed, I believe a theater of any size would have the same effect on parking traffic and the surrounding neighborhood. It is for all these reasons I strongly recommend voting to deny a variance for 100% of the Water Street Cinema's parking responsibilities. Thank you for your consideration. Do you wish to make a response to that?
Yeah. So, I didn't do this study. And let's look at who did the study, because I would like, this was a study, we were requested to do this study at our own expense by the Village Planning Board. We went out for bid to get people who were qualified to do the traffic studies. I don't do traffic studies, I have no idea about traffic. I was a mathematician, I worked for IBM, I'm retired, I have no understanding of traffic. And we went out and we found a flaw of a person who's qualified, okay? A person who's a certified person who's worked in this field. And I don't know, maybe this person was correct. But if he's, I want to send this to this person to see whether there's a potential suit here, because he is either correct or he's defamed this professional.
Yes.
Okay. And there are errors in what he said, simple, common errors. In fact, we have bought a piece of the Gateway District, okay? The Lynch's property, seven words, is split in this part of the Gateway. He says that's not the case. All right, so there are these minor errors, but that's in the noise. The question is, is what's a reasonable response, okay? And I don't know what it is. Maybe he's absolutely right. But this was requested by the zoning board. It was defined, the very definition of how this was done was specified by the engineer of the Village Planning Board. I didn't make it up, I didn't decide how to do it, I didn't decide what streets to look at or what times. I didn't go out and count cards of the times that I wanted to. The Village Planning Board said, ask our engineer, our engineer worked with this person to have it defined and did this study. They reviewed the study, okay? I don't know who he is, okay? These were public officials who in good faith took this study as you did and all read it, and none of them turned around and said the methodology was wrong or the information was wrong. Some individual who's not in this room, as best I know, since I don't remember...
You are here, okay.
This individual here has stated that this is the case. Seems like a perfectly nice gentleman, he looks fine. I have no understanding what his knowledge is or the accuracy of what he said. What other reaction could I have, okay? I want, you know, I have not seen this, I've not seen the earlier report that he gave him. I'm kind of nonplussed, I don't know what to do with this, okay? But we had a relatively, you know, I'm trying to find a process. We have a Village Planning Board, they asked to have a study done. We spend $15,000, $18,000 to have a study done by an independent. We didn't do the study, we have an independent. They accept the study. Now we're about to make a term that says the study is wrong. It's kind of difficult for me to process.
Yes, and it leaves this board with the situation that says we either accept the study, which was asked for and directed by our own planning board, and we weigh that against the assertions in this letter. That's up for the members of the board to determine.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again, I would like to think that the intent this evening is, there is, there was a 62-day clock, we added 62 days to it to get to this evening by mutual agreement. I believe that until our next regular meeting on April 9th, that it's appropriate for the board, either way, for the board or the applicant, to seek by mutual agreement additional time for the express purpose of taking in all the comments. And I think it was, it may have been, perhaps, I'm sure the council probably advised that it can be appropriate to read the statement or not. However, with that, it reinforces the impacts that we're concerned with here for the area variance. And what I'd suggest those are, they've been stated very clearly regarding Wards Avenue and very clearly by some merchants at Water Street Market in spite of the owner's agreement to allow a shared parking arrangement. I would suggest that in our village, by going beyond the 400 feet in our code, which is already under review, and there also are simultaneous parking studies in this village to bring up to date the physical setting of our village, which has existed for some time, and the current thinking about walking and driving. Again, as I've said to the planning board, some of our regulations regarding parking were conceived at a time when it was believed that the proliferation of cars would continue without end. So what I'm suggesting is that going beyond 400 feet and perhaps reviewing the shared parking arrangement, reviewing even a permit system for residents who live on Wards Avenue, and having, the applicant had mentioned that whether it be by website or handout, there would be a substantial effort to educate first-time patrons of the theater, should it be built, and returning customers such that they understand that there is plenty of affordable parking and for which we are actually proposing to increase the time interval that you can park there along Hasbrook, and then finally leading to this very parking lot in Village Hall. And these days, folks visiting New Falls and folks who live within New Falls, I don't see too much resistance to walking approximately 1/4 mile, which I measured from the site. So again, the intent is to fully consider this project, which I think has great benefits to the community, and we did hear public sentiment on that during the hearing, as well as the very specific concerns along Wards Avenue and at Water Street Market. Again, for the purpose of the Zoning Board of Appeals, that is the area variance for parking. When and if it returns to the planning board, there are other considerations, everything from view sheds and roof elevations to even the capacity of sidewalks to allow people to mill about before and after the movies that are being shown, and even the opportunity for the developer to reexamine the interior space and even affect the parking downward a little bit. I don't want to give the impression that we can make the parking requirement, you know, cut in half or anything of that magnitude. But that's the purpose of the month that if agreed upon by the developer and board would allow a decision with additional substantiation from staff and even retention of, that I would work with counsel to be retained on behalf of the ZDA towards this. So it would be a structured agreement seeking to address the concerns on both sides of this project, as well as acknowledge that we have empty spaces, as I've seen since I've lived here in the Village Hall parking lot in particular. It's not well-known that there's a lot of parking there that is very close to Main Street and other destinations.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the helpful suggestions. We really have two major ideas coming from what our planner has just offered. One is by mutual agreement of the board and Mr. Sacker to extend the decision on this particular matter until our April meeting. Let me ask Mr. Sacker first, will you be willing to do that?
The answer is yes, but, okay? But has to do with, what is it that we think we can do to have a more fluid dialogue, okay? And I'm not looking for a place to litigate, I'm not looking for a place to argue for or against. I would like, first of all, there has never been any kind of a public showing of actually what this proposed building might look like, because it breeds the inaccuracies. There is, you've seen it, I showed you a diagram, there's 100-foot enclosed walkway in which people can stand out of the rain. If I can't fit the full capacity to the theater within that 100 feet...
Do you have that with you currently?
No, I don't.
I did.
I did not do. What?
I did.
Okay, so this is, that's not a useful, but you're concerned that people are going to be out in the rain, there's imitations in the lobby.
I have the drawing, I just, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Actually, I was hoping to avoid the exchange.
Yeah, okay.
At this point, in other words, again, I wanted to introduce, coming back to this issue for the ZDA tonight by mentioning that the planning board has all of the other components of this review process to deal with. They must hold a public hearing, and they must make a determination on the State Environmental Quality Review after regarding significance, so...
I think that's what I'm asking, there's clearly this interlock between these two things. One is what you would think would go on in the planning board, which would say, let's see if that design looked like, you have a public hearing, why is it good, bad, or ugly, okay? Here we have another issue which really has to do with parking, okay? Variance is about parking.
Yes.
Within that compine, Kurt said something which I think is also important. We came in, we asked for 75 spaces. You could say... You could say no. And then my question is, well, does that mean the next week I come in and ask for seventy-four spaces and I keep coming back until we come to a number where you think is conceivable? Or is there a way in which we can have something other than tossing things over the trans and then have it done?
Okay.
You know, here's my, look, you give me a number, I will go back and see whether I think I can create a viable theater against that number and I'll be frank.
At this, at this point, the only issue I want to get settled is whether or not you're in agreement.
Yes.
Yes. Now, is the board in agreement to deferring this until our April meeting?
Don't all speak at once.
Yeah, I would be agreeable to it. I have a few concerns, I would just like to verbalize sometime tonight.
At some point we'll let you do that. At this point, I would entertain a motion to defer this until the April meeting. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. Discussion, all in?
Point of order. Can I have a point of order?
Well, no.
No, okay, thank you.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light aye. All right. We have that month of grace in which board could consider whatever it needs to consider and if Mr. Sacker needs to meet with us, we can establish a special meeting.
Would it help to have a straw poll up here regarding our feelings about...
I don't think so.
Good enough.
No. The decision, the decision has to be made by our board and by Mr. Sacker, and we've already made that decision. Now, the second suggestion that our planner gave us was that we extend the parking, possible parking areas beyond the existing requirement of four hundred feet.
What, what does, where?
That would allow for parking...
What's four hundred feet?
It's in the village code.
No, 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 I mean, we've gone back to some point, what's, what's four hundred feet from there?
Well, among other things, Water Street Market and Wertz Avenue, among other, and Main Street, but of course, as you know, it's a very narrow section of Main Street with no parking on either side along the front edge or the opposite side of the street. I think you need to go beyond four hundred feet.
But does four hundred feet include where the post office parking is?
There's, there's a drawing of four hundred feet against the...
What page is that?
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Somewhere in... I don't know whether it's in your version, but we, I drew in what four hundred feet is, because I have the same question.
Somewhere in here is a table, I remember reading, that, yeah, here it is. Page sixty-eight tells you how far the other public parking areas are, which is actually the more interesting than the four hundred feet.
Well, like, I only see one public space, and I'm not so sure it's so public, is by the bank.
That's not...
I don't think that's public, I think...
That's not public, and we've even had representatives in the audience here to monitor our conversations about that lot, so, I mean, again, that is private. I think it's, it's sought after as public parking and...
Well, there isn't anything within this four hundred feet that's public parking.
Yeah, turn to page sixty-eight and you'll see where they...
Page what?
Page sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight, and you'll see the parking lot, just about their distance. Carl, may I ask, you've interpreted what you said among the thought. It seems like you're asking us and perhaps the planning board not to make a decision until the village has changed some regulations regarding parking and distances in order to accommodate this project.
Well, not quite, though I did mention those ongoing efforts. However, this board, even in advance of action by the village board with regard to parking regulations, this board could grant relief. It might, it might even be more especially appropriate if we knew that, that study and recognition of the fact that four hundred feet is far too conservative for walkability, especially at this, at this point in time.
I'm not sure it is because of the condition of the sidewalks in the winter time in this village. I'm really not sure that that's the case. And I am thinking it might streamline things if this project were simply put off until the village has an idea about what it wants to do about these sidewalks.
Such as sidewalks? Well, I agree, I haven't, not a day has gone by that I haven't thought about sidewalks and the need for improvement and accommodating everyone.
And the, and the four hundred-foot limit that we now have and the fact that we're being asked for one hundred percent variance, it seems to me that this is perhaps a very, in light of these other things that you're bringing up, this is a very premature proposal.
I understand that it could be, it could be better timed. It certainly could be. By the same token, I am aware of some constraints associated with the project regarding funding and grants. Now, that's, that doesn't become our problem, indeed, it, it doesn't. It's, I think it's important to be aware of it. However, I would not, I would not seek to impose some, some particular measure of consideration that should be given by, by members when they consider this or the planning board for that matter. So I understand what you mean.
It seems like a lot of work needs to be done by the planning board before we get to this point, especially in view of the fact that some people here aren't ready to give their opinion about the parking variance requested. If the variance is to be reduced by whatever need, then that's a whole other fact, it seems to me.
That's a fair point, and procedurally speaking, if the ZBA thought that it was best for more review, especially secret review to be undertaken by the planning board, it didn't arrive here at the ZBA at that precise moment for any procedural requirement or reason. So I think there is flexibility. I'd be concerned about, about the continuity of the process and the, and how it would, and how it would be viewed, but it, it's agreed that it arrived here at a moment that far from being random was not procedurally set forth as required for arriving at this moment.
Now, the question I have is, if we were to vote for a hundred percent variance, does this set a precedent? And then the next guy comes up and says, "Wow, you gave him a hundred percent variance, why can't you give me a hundred percent variance?"
But you could say the same thing about any variance, no?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, you know, ten percent variance is one thing, a hundred percent is completely...
If the variance, we're not asking for parking.
That's, that's the thing that bothers me, is the precedence, and I don't want to sit here and have somebody come later on and say, "Well, you gave it to him, why can't you give it to me?" And they get a whole bunch of lawyers and, well, that might be it.
Ordinarily, those situations are handled on a case-by-case basis. If indeed, we did establish a precedent by doing that. The next person who comes down the pike and says, "Well, you did it for him, so you have to do it for me," we have a perfect right to say, "Well, the circumstances under which we decided to do that for him are not identical to the circumstances that you're requesting."
Well, what if somebody comes with an identical situation?
Then, then...
Then what?
We might well be guided by the precedent. It was, it's still up to this board to make that decision and weigh whatever the factors are.
That's the only thing that bothers me about it, are precedents being set and then coming back to bite us.
And they're being made in a strange procedural, you know, slippery slope from here, frankly. That's why I think it should come to the ZBA when the planning board has it all straightened out, unless, you know, we want to take a straw poll tonight and give the developer an idea of what we think we would vote if we have to vote. I have two concerns, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Kay.
Oh, I have two concerns. One is that I'm not sure that we can agree to having a situation without handicap parking.
I'm sorry, there is handicap, there will be dedicated handicap parking in the Water Street Market parking lot for this theater.
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I said that I'm not sure that we can go along with granting a variance that does not have any on-site handicap parking.
Well, so, again, on-site, it will, it will not be, it will above the site, because you appreciate that the site ends next to and connected to the Water Street Market.
I understand that, but here's my concern, is we give this to you, but we don't really give it to you, we give it to the building. And if, you know, the Sunrise Primal Scream Society goes in there after you, the Sunrise Primal Scream Therapy folks, you know, have the same right. That, that's a concern.
But that would be true even if there was on-site handicap parking.
That would be, but at least I think it would be in compliance with the 2010 version of the ADA. I mean, I've got a, a serious legal concern that I would like to have clarified.
Actually, what it would be is, and actually, this was the subject of some discussion in between the last time this, this was here, and, and what was said was that the spaces may be off-site if they are, if they are legally arranged for and the connection to the entrance is as required, as specified by the Americans with Disabilities Act, then it is compliant. There was a question about whether those, those spaces can't be shared, as much as my understanding, with Water Street Market. They would need to be available when, at any time the theater is operating, they would need to be available for patrons there. And actually, our, our, as it was said, one hundred percent parking variance does not include accessible spaces, that is, ADA-compliant spaces. It simply cannot include that. We would be, regardless of whether it's more recent portions of the ADA that came into, that were promulgated, or whether it's previous ones, we actually don't have that ability, of course, because it, it came from a budget and we cannot reduce it.
Yeah.
But of course, the, the non-ADA spaces, yes, and that, that's a good, that's a good point of qualification, to qualify that these are, that these are not the ADA spaces we're talking about. They are off-site, they're above the site, they must have, they must comply in every aspect regarding slope and flat area followed by a rise at a certain degree. They must, that's, that's prescribed enough that that's not even subjective, and we must comply with it. But the area variance sort is not for the ADA spaces, it's for the, it's for the non-ADA compliant spaces.
Does that exist?
Well, Mr. Sacker has presented a plan by which there will be a covered walk that will connect the parking on the Water Street Market lot to the entrance of the theater, box office area of the theater. And that, as I recall, is compliant with the slope and, and the necessary qualifications of the ADA.
It is, and actually, it'll, it would be our building inspector who would confirm that upon the submitted design which exists by the project architect. So it's merely the, the building inspector who sees to it that each and every section, even if there are new portions of the ADA coming online, that it complies. And so what we really have here is an application for an area variance for parking spaces that are not required by the Americans with Disabilities.
Right. May, I have a question, I, I need some clarification. So the, the suggestion of waiting another month, which could be interpreted as figuring out how to change the law quick, fast, in a hurry so that four hundred feet is no longer the measurement...
No, I can't...
Wait, wait, let me finish my question. Could also be interpreted as looking at a project, I guess what I'm thinking about is this, if you just look at the traffic study, or even with Mr. Burton's notes about his understanding of the traffic study, we're talking about what, it's almost like we're talking as a given that this is going to be a very successful project and that there are going to be a lot of people who want to be going to these movies. I'm assuming, because I live right on Plattekill and I see the foot traffic going along Plattekill, I'm assuming that a lot of these people are going to be students who are going to be walking and, you know, that they're farther than the parking lot and they're going to be walking to this. I myself walk to Water Street, I wouldn't drive to Water Street. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, from my perspective and from where I live and knowing the large parking space that's right across the street from me next to Village Hall, besides the rest of the parking, besides the stuff that we're probably parked here, those of us who drive, that, that there really is a lot of parking and if in fact it's a five or six-minute walk, I understand and I have serious concerns about setting precedent and the slippery slope and, and all of that. But I'm not sure that waiting, spending another month to look at the practicality of this, especially if down the road it's decided that four hundred feet isn't a reasonable amount of space, you know, we're not saying two miles, you know what I mean? We're, we're a five or six-minute walk. I'm not feeling like it's like people are going to stop, are going to have to park at Stop &amp; Shop. So it seems to me, if in fact there's an audience for this, the way the traffic study and, and people are concerned about it in a different way, and I'm very sympathetic to you guys, by the way, I just want you to know. I want your, your help when it comes to all of the kids walking down Plattekill at four in the morning, walking back up to camp. So I'm very sympathetic to the kinds of issues you're concerned about, we live with our own version of them. But still and all, I think in the interests of a project that has very clear benefits or potential benefits for the community, that we not do away with our responsibilities, that's why we're sitting here, but that we really keep as open a mind for as long as as reasonably possible to make sure that if the project can go ahead within the constraints that the community needs it to, that it can go ahead.
Thank you.
I mean, that's a lot of but...
I think that's why there are ZBAs, because we know from living here what the conditions are in our community and we can somehow predict what things might be happening in the future. Also, Kurt, I don't know what your experience is, but in, in my limited experience with the planning board in the town, I've never seen a developer present a traffic study that didn't support what the developer wanted to do.
I understand.
Okay, we all understand that, I just want to get it out in those terms.
Yes, and actually, I mean, it should be known that levels of service are not the be-all and-all. In fact, other than traffic engineers, many have observed that that type, that type of quantitative measurement is not all that suitable, especially when there's no formal way of introducing other modes of transportation such as people arriving by walking or bicycles. They don't, either that or they assign a, a random uniform five percent, and New Paltz is not going to conform to that, to that sort of standard numbers. Of course, it's much greater than that, we know that from recent census figures. But the idea that, that what may be accomplished in the, in this, over this next month is that the request itself could potentially be altered, and not only by the number of spaces, but also in a way that actually allows the board to determine that we've removed the congestion that has been, the specter of congestion that has been raised by, by a public awareness of those coming to the theater and others that they are not going to find, they're not even going to find a place to stop and drop people off in front, and if they did, there'd still be steps, that's quite visible. There's not going to be accommodations there. For those who need accessible spaces under the ADA, they would be, of course, directed to the rear of the theater and that ramp system. The others, in the same way that Water Street Market, and again, you're getting, it's a little bit of speculation here, okay? You're getting a subjective opinion from me here in that not even close to all the patrons of Water Street Market, when it's really hopping, are parked in that lot. They can be coming from the rail trail which runs right by, or they could become, they could have parked several blocks... or they could become, they could have parked several blocks east on Main Street and other places, and they find themselves walking perhaps more distance than they even are aware, unless they've got a pedometer.
Because the lot is full.
Yes.
And in my experience, again, with the parking analysis, it's also routine and expected that people come forward and say, "That's really not the way it is." So let me just say that it would be hard for me to vote in favor of this, asking for this huge variance, given the code that we have now. I would say that, and you can take it from there. If it comes back in a different form, and it would be nice to see what is proposed, I would also never vote for an outdoor cafe in residential, so.
I, I would like to know if you have ever done a survey at the college of how much interest there would be from the college with type, the types of films that you would be showing. I mean, obviously, you would have to do a survey. You would have to state what kinds of films would be shown, and, you know, do a survey from the college. Has that ever happened?
No.
Okay. And how do you have a faintest idea of what these kids are interested in?
Excuse me just a second. If you want to answer this question, I will give you an answer, which is, you may view as detrimental to the case. I don't count on the university. I don't count as the university as the prime source of patrons for an art cinema. I was told by somebody who runs an art cinema, "If you want to know what your patrons look like, look in the mirror." I'm over 50 years old, okay? The people who I know and people I've been living with for the last 50 years, I have to give away.
I mean, the only art cinema I know is Reinbeck.
Reinbeck, Woodstock, Rosendale, James Burns, Amherst Cinema. I'm part of the association, the Art House Convergence Association. I spend a lot of time quizzing these people. So just in terms of demographic of people who go to the theater, it's not the university. It's the peripheral, it's the faculty, it's other people connected with the university. But students, it's hard to get students out of their rooms to go to a movie of any kind, pretty much.
Because, because we've been talking about students walking down and not parking.
So I'm sorry, I know this isn't public, but let me, let me just say one thing here. I think you have a problem, okay? And the problem is, are you want to view this as things are today, or as one could view them tomorrow? And what do I mean by that? One is, today, people don't park unless they have line of sight to where they're going. If I can't see the restaurant, I can't see the store, I will not park. And what this theater is pleading, and in some sense, the traffic report says, "Wait a minute. If you're going to look at yourself as a village in town of walking, bicycling, people taking a bus, 45,000 people took a bus in the first 10 months of last year. If you're going to look at yourself in those terms, then you have to tilt the lens a little bit." But that's hard. That's looking at the future. The future is very hard to predict.
I can't tell you how many students or faculty would be coming to this theater. But I can tell you that you've got a population of about 7,000 people, and I would anticipate that within that population, you would have a considerable number who would be interested in this kind of thing.
And would walk.
Yeah.
That's within just the 1.8 square mile village. Mr. Chairman, may I add, thinking back to our public hearing, there were many different viewpoints expressed on the project, because it was the first time the public was able to speak on it, as well as the parking situation. And it's my recollection that there were several students and some associated, several, several, SUNY New Paltz college students, and some of whom were associated with particular programs there that, that came and waited to speak and enunciated quite well their interest in it. So, again, that's my recollection. I can't tell you how many. And the other thing is that I think that SUNY New Paltz has an emphasis on theater and other arts, and I don't think we should put the students in our community, I don't think we should consider them, generally speaking, the same as the average college student, perhaps across the nation. I think they're more interested in, more interested in, in things like this and, and programs like this, and...
Okay?
Yeah. I'm caught on something of a contradiction. The Gateway District allows for 100% lot coverage.
Yes, it does.
Which implicitly says something about parking. So it seems to me that the variance that we should in fact be asking, being asked for, would be a variance on the 400-foot limit, rather than the variance on the non-for-profit parking spaces. I'm sorry, but it just, it, it makes it a little easier for me to look at in terms of whether the requested area variance is substantial. When you look at it as 100%, and I, I agree with Dave, I am uncomfortable with that. I also clearly am uncomfortable about not having accessible handicapped parking. And my understanding is that the Water Street Market is willing to extend this to you, but there is not any kind of easement being given. And things happen. We hope the Water Street Market stays in business, in the same business hands, but sometimes it doesn't work out that way. And so, just a couple of scenarios, because I mean, this is what we're supposed to be looking at. What happens if the current agreement with the Water Street Market is changed because the ownership of Water Street Market changes?
It's a good question. There's the other question which has been asked, is what happens if we're unsuccessful with this theater? Let me try to address that one.
Okay, yeah.
Because the agreement with Water Street is in fact with the, the non-for-profit company Moving Picture Partners. Because the, because the owner of Water Street is very concerned. So suppose some unsavory group of people go bankrupt, some unsavory group of people take over this movie theater. And the answer is, they can't, they're not going to be able to operate that movie theater, as you know, because they will lose the use of the Water Street Market and the ADA parking, okay? So now maybe you've got an empty warehouse, and that's an exposure to you. Because it's not of much use. But it's something that will come back to an organization like this to say, "Okay." What will we permit at that point under those circumstances? Because it will really be back in the control of the village town.
Right.
Now, what happens to the theater if the theater is successful and Water Street Market changes hands? I don't know. I mean, I can try to, we can try to win agreement with the Water Street Market, though have this go on beyond that event, and it will be part of the agreement, and you can create that as a condition in making any judgment. I'm, I don't know where to begin.
Yeah, I'm not clear on what conditions we can place on the variance. I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that we can.
Well, we can place conditions on them, however, obviously, we could proceed.
Whereas, yeah, as we can.
They can.
Whereas, if a variance were requested.
Variances can, can have conditions. What you can't do is, it is run with the land. It runs with the land. It's essentially forever.
Whereas, if the variance being requested did not rely on those Water Street Market places, but was rather saying, "It is reasonable to expect people to walk 1,000 feet," or, you know, I mean, there I have movies, you're telling me they're just essentially...
The reliance has to do with the ADA spaces predispended. If, if, if you take away the Water Street spaces, and you're willing to walk five to seven minutes, then there's a plethora of spaces. There's over 300 spaces at the time in the evening when you think you're having this traffic. The person who went out and counted found 160 empty spaces. So there's a, there are real spaces out there, okay? But where you run into the real legal problem, I think, is on the ADA spaces for which you have to be...
And, and I really want to hear council say that we could even entertain what you're proposing. I mean, I would love to hear that, yeah, that's okay, but it's not crystal clear to me that you can not have the ADA spaces on your property. Can you, can you, could you adjust to that?
I can't do it, this, okay?
Okay.
So let me just say this, but again, to go back to the example that you made. You have a zero lot line, and in some sense, you're saying, "In the Gateway District, you're not going to allow for anything that requires ADA parking, okay?"
Which is everything now.
Yes.
So how does, so what does zero lot line mean? It means that it's not a zero lot line code?
Well, let's put it this way. What we have is, we may have come upon a, a contradictory or not-so-well, well-crafted portion of our existing code. There are, they are found in our code, and it's one more thing for me to place on my list. But that's, you know, that, that's fair. But we have found these, you're, you're absolutely right. And one way of looking at it, if the Gateway District allows 100% coverage, because it allows zero lot line in all sides, as well as the, the B2 district, and many of the pre-existing buildings that preexist our zoning, which, which we feel is an important part of our, our character in the village. However, in, in looking at the Gateway District regulations, I just double-checked to see if they address that, and they don't. So it's a little bit contradictory. I would say we're still looking, I would say that we still look for a possible solution which would, which would alleviate the collective and individual concerns on both sides of this project, in the Wards Avenue and the merchants at, at Water Street Market. And I think that that is, that is feasible. The village is considering, again, is considering these, these new parking regulations, again, expanding the amount of time you might spend parked at a parking meter, which seems to make perfect sense to me. And as well as utilizing spaces, for example, in this case, I identified Hasbrook and, and Village Hall. The truth is, just as Vicki mentioned, we're not there yet. There has been no, there, an action plan has not been adopted yet on those. And, yeah, and even a proposal that came from the planning board is, is going to be commencing review. So in a way, the, I think, as you mentioned before, the, the timing is not perfect, but I'd be concerned if the project was, was lost simply to close, but not quite, in terms, in terms of timing. In other words, the, the ZBA in reviewing this variance very soon after our parking regulations are likely to change. So the, the, even the precedent would be, would become different once our regulations change, because this would have been perhaps the last application of any significance to seek a, a variance related to parking.
I've got a question.
I want to clarify something, though, Dave, because there are two different parking plans we're talking about. There is a proposed interim parking plan from the planning board, which has very different, that goes along with planning, design, and parking regarding development. There is a proposed master parking plan, totally from the village board, which is going to have immediate interim and long-term recommendations. The immediate ones are going to increase parking meter costs in the Ford District, and they are totally unrelated to development. They are a master plan of parking and the use of parking within the village as we know it, and they are not related to the planning board, and they have nothing to do with planning board program. Just want to clarify.
What is being proposed in terms of the foot requirement? That's 400 feet now. What is that being proposed to be changed?
Actually, it's not that at this moment. I think it's part, it's not part of the master.
No, it's not part, it has nothing to do with us, the parking plan.
And nor is it part of the other one. That Sally just mentioned. In other words, what we, what we've done is worth asking, with, with the exception of residential uses, the planning board asked me to prepare, and I did, and, and recommended to the village board consideration of allowing them to use our current requirements, again, non-residential, current non-residential off-street parking requirements as guidelines, and not requirements, which means that this application would not be here right now. If, if they were to be favorably, have been favorably considered by the village board and enacted as local law, that obviously has, that process is just beginning, and it will take a couple of months.
Wait, I, I misunderstood what you said.
Sure. The, that the, the current requirements that they're on the village would become near guidelines.
Would become guidelines, right.
And there would be no, under what's proposed by the planning board and recommended to the village board, there would not be, in this case, a need for the applicant to come here, but a need for a reasoned finding based on, again, public input at the public hearing, and, and an assessment of parking in the area.
But how distant is that?
There actually, it would, it, it actually takes away the need to address the, what was the 400-foot rule, which is the way I started out advising the planning board. But they, they had explained to me that their interest was in not being bound by these things, because they observed that so many of the destinations within the village predate current zoning or zoning altogether, and therefore, simply don't have dedicated off-street parking associated, or not much at all, associated with them, yet they continue to be favored destinations. So this is, this is a substantial departure from our current code, and it's not known how, it's just now, having been referred to the village board. So their consideration is just, is just starting.
And that's from the planning board, as opposed to the parking plan.
Right.
So those guidelines would apply to businesses in the Gateway District? Or they would apply to everyone downtown? Or where would the requirements change into guidelines?
Throughout the village, with the exception of residential uses, where it was unanimous among board members and my own input, that we, we cannot afford to, to take the requirements away with regard to residential uses, for several reasons.
Sally, is this issue before your board now?
Before the board?
Yeah.
It is coming tomorrow night, the, the recommendation from the parking, from the planning board.
We have already agreed to defer a decision until the April meeting. With this information, and with the concerns that have already been raised, this gives Mr. Sackler an opportunity to make whatever modifications he wants to make with respect to his plans. I might add another thing that he might consider, because it's been raised as an issue, and that is the possibility of the widening of the sidewalk.
I think that's, that could be a, a condition of sorts. If an area variance were to be granted by the ZBA, that the planning board would pick up where your conditional recommendation leaves off. I, I think that parking is related to foot traffic, of course, and however, that is, that remains in, in the planning board's purview. And I think we're, we are certainly going to be looking closely at the current state of the sidewalks. And I think Vicki just mentioned that, you know, take a look at the conditions, whether it be because of snow cover or ice, or maybe even just, you know, perhaps miscellaneous sidewalk panels, or whatever it is. Are they, are they truly ADA-accessible, our sidewalks? So as it relates to this project, that's not only a consideration, but could be an imposed condition with regard to improvements in some area, maybe along the front of town Main Street, although I acknowledge there's not much room to work with. Well, there's not terribly much room to work with.
And it's a state of the city, careful.
Well, nobody's asked anything about this, and I'm looking at the shape and size of this lot, and I'm looking at this floor plan. Does this floor plan take up the entire lot?
Yes. Not hard. It takes up the entire lot behind the existing building in 12 Main. There is, in some sense, the existing building on 12 Main has some room on it.
So in other words, behind the building, there's no room to create parking?
Let's talk about that for just a second. The, the answer is essentially no. First of all, what access would you have to that parking? The access would be through Water Street, since the other access would be to use the right-of-way off of Wards. and I don't think that's a favorable way to go. I don't want to drive traffic through Works. I don't want to drive traffic through the right-of-way, although I think it's legal. So it would require that, in some sense, you cut, we're already planning to cut into the rock. I mean, part of the reason this building is not as tall as people imagine it is that we go down to the level of the Works parking lot. So we cut 12 feet down into it.
Oh, it's that much?
Well, you know...
I've never been over there, so...
Over there, there's a set of stairs going down. We're not building up at the level of the lot. We're starting to build down at the level of Works Street Market because again, you need a ramp that starts at where you park all the way up. So I have to start down there and since you have stadium seating, you want to start down there because you're going to go up in terms of height as you go in. I would, you know, I offered, when we met before, to give you a review of what this plan is and I'm still open and I've offered to other people to do a review of this plan. I've not been taken up by anybody on the offer. But, so the answer is, it just doesn't make sense to do parking. Maybe I could get six spaces, but in getting those six spaces, I'd give up six spaces that exist in the Water Street Market parking. What's the difference? Is I would own those six spaces? Well, maybe legally it would make a difference. Maybe I can make a deal with Water Street and buy their six spaces. Tell me, tell me what's going to make a difference. You know, Carl, you said I could come back with another plan. Give me a hint, if anybody has a hint. If the answer is, you need a plan that requires zero parking, then I know a plan I can go back with. If you tell me I can come back with 80%, 90%, 75% on a vest, I can try to come back with another plan. But if your view is that this is not feasible under any circumstances for you to give a variance, then I think there's some justice in you telling me, don't waste your time and money to come back with one. And I'd appreciate that, okay? Is this...
That was my point, yes.
Your point is I should forget about it.
My point is you need to get a feel from all of these people. And that's why I asked for a follow-up.
No, no, so wait a minute. I don't want to do polling here on that. I was hoping that we could either meet or you could meet and say, the number is, and hold your fingers behind you and come up with a number. Then we can know whether there's something we can do together.
What Mr. Sacker is reminding the board is if he's to be given any kind of direction at all, it's the responsibility of the board to say to him, this is what we want or this is what we require and this is what we want you to go home and change. Now, is anyone on the board ready to offer that?
I'm ready to vote on what's before us. I'm not ready to...
We've already decided that that's not going to happen. We have an extension of time.
But I think it's a difficulty for a regulatory body to work in such a way as to then sort of bring forth what is going to be coming to it in the future. That's a very slippery slope.
Doesn't that put me on the case that tomorrow, when you say no today, I come back and say, I ask for 75, should I ask for 74? And come back every day with a number until we come to a number that you're happy with? Can't we do this with a little more clarity?
Might I ask a question and maybe it will clarify for both? The planning board referred Mr. Sacker to you for a variance on parking. The project is in the Gateway District. Is there clarity in this board's mind what parking requirements are in the Gateway District? Number one. And two, if the planning board conceives that there is a parking requirement, I think it moves the planning board to suggest to you what that requirement is before you can consider granting a variance. You're being asked to grant a variance with very little information and I think that's where the two of you, in my humble opinion, are sort of... I understand Mr. Sacker is saying, give me a hint what you need and you're saying, but we're not sure. So I think maybe there needs to be some clarification on what the parking requirements are in the Gateway District.
Well, yeah, that's what I was saying in a sense earlier, that if you can have 100% lot coverage.
Exactly.
What perhaps is in fact being asked for is not a specific number of parking spaces, but rather the distance at which those parking spaces need to be.
I don't think you know that.
And I don't think we know that, yeah, so...
We do know the requirement for this project based on the number of seats and there's no consideration in our code regardless of what district you're in. If you're proposing a theater, I believe it's one space per six seats. And that requirement would be the same wherever a theater or cultural institution is allowed.
Is that true in Gateway, which specifies...
Well, you're right that, as I mentioned, I think it's unclear or contradictory.
But Mr. Sacker doesn't have legal arrangements made so that there's appropriate controls, a relationship between his corporation and Water Street Market in the way those...
That would need to be addressed for the ADA parking.
Is it worth it?
Yes, I was working towards moving away from a shared parking agreement with Water Street Market, although it's already been granted by the owner. However, the merchants, some of the merchants have come out and written and spoken about their concerns, especially during overlapping times of operation. It might seem, I think it might be fine to allow that after a certain hour when there's very few commercial spaces open in Water Street Market. That might be after 6:00 PM or so. And then on Works Avenue, I also think that there was a lot of validity in the concerns expressed about that street and how it's used. And there probably are college student rentals there and there probably are a lot of cars and there probably, and of course, that neighborhood wasn't conceived for each household to have that number of cars, so there's probably some parking pressure.
Well, to satisfy the parking on Works Avenue is that everybody that would park on Works Avenue that lives there would get a parking permit and there would be signs put up, parking by permit only.
Except if you have three students living in a house and two other people are also living in a house, you may need five parking spaces.
Well, then I have to ask, what are the conditions right now with regard to parking? Is it not residing on that street? I can't say only the folks who live there know whether there's already an untenable competition because of course, there's, we, no community is allowed to regulate by unrelated members of a household. That's well established.
Have you given any thought to an alternative to using Water Street Market parking?
Yes, actually, other than when Water Street Market is, its commercial spaces are not operating, then I think that might alleviate the overlapping conflict altogether. Then my feeling is that many people who walk to the theater, whether or not they come to New Paltz as visitors or whether they reside in the village or town of New Paltz, my opinion is that many of them will park and end up at the theater in advance of the movie they would like, at the time of the movie they would like to see. Right now, again, you're hearing some anecdotal observations from me, but I don't believe too many people set out to visit New Paltz and then go home just because there's a backup at a traffic light or not a parking space with a line of sight to their destination. The visitors I see in New Paltz often seem very happy to be here, all smiles. The only time you might not see all smiles is when folks are visiting and they're driving their cars and they're visibly a little bit tense about, maybe, you know, they might be going the wrong way down Church Street. I mean, residing on Church Street, I see that a lot. Or they might not know they're doing it, of course. And they might be driving around a little bit more than they want. They might have people in the car saying, how about that space? Oh, no, it's a hydrant. I mean, I could see some tension, but once they get out of their cars, they look like happy folks. But again, that's sort of not a scientific observation.
The issue about, you know, jamming up parking at Water Street is sort of separate from some of the business responses we saw earlier in regard to the more problems there are parking down there. The more moviegoers would impact parking that has been traditionally available for ongoing businesses here. And I know that some businesses, this would be a good thing. It would bring more interest to the community, but others not so much. So the wave, the tsunami of unintended consequences goes well past the Gateway District.
That's true.
Yes, I don't think we need to...
I just to give you at least some possible direction in terms of your thinking between now and our meeting again in April. I'm suggesting that you might consider reducing the number of seats so that you would reduce the amount of parking you need and that you might consider modifying your design in such a way that you would not be dependent upon Water Street Market for the ADA parking. That there be at least a couple of parking spaces on the property, which might mean modifying the design of the theater building. I offer that simply because you asked for direction and so far, I haven't heard any offering of that direction and I feel responsible for giving you a little.
I would like to echo that I really think there has to be ADA parking on the lot. I think that's what, you know, not a lawyer, but my understanding of that law right now, as of 2010, you had to have, if you make any change to a building, you have to have the spots there.
That's not necessarily true. The design that Mr. Sacker created with the ramp covers the ADA requirement of being accessible.
Well, it covers the requirement being accessible.
Well, not the parking, that has to be provided to, that provides the entry, but not the way to park before you enter.
Right, right, but it addresses the issue of accessibility for ADA people.
That's accessible, because I'm not sure that's what the law says. Now, I would like a legal...
Sure. If there was an easement, would that effectively be...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, one at a time.
If there was an easement with Water Street Market for those, what, I think it's six spaces, is it?
I think that's right.
Okay. If there was an easement, would that in effect be putting that property as part of the property?
If some lawyer tells us, it's okay, I'm all right with it. I just think that we have a responsibility as a board to be aware of ADA regulations and strive to uphold them, honor them. I mean, you know, that's just my understanding of the law and I would be thrilled if someone said to me, you are all wet. But I might not be.
Well, we certainly, we certainly...
But I think the easement would...
Right, but I mean, I just want something that is clearly legal, that we are doing right.
I fully appreciate this, okay. And I, so let me ask you a question, how do you, I mean, I can go to my lawyer. Do you go to your lawyer or whoever and get an idea? I mean, I'm perfectly game to get out of this path because I think it's a real issue. How is the best way for us to get out of this path? So in fact, we can establish what in fact is the requirement? And then, well, an easement suffice? Do I need to carve out a piece of the building so that in fact they can park there despite the fact that it means it gives, you know, there's not a net gain for the world in terms of parking spaces? What in fact, you know, how do we, can somebody give me a hint on how to do that?
This is all rock, the whole thing is rock?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up there.
It's all rock.
But it's sprayable shell, it's not glass.
What about parking under the building?
Would you like us to name it now? To the tremendous expense? So we're talking about an enormous expense. It's a great idea, I like it as much as I like balloons where we hang the cost, but it's just a enormous expense.
Okay, I'm just going out here.
But you know what I'm saying? I love that idea, I think that's great. Come on, we've all grew up in Oregon areas, we know those.
What would you consider between now and our April meeting, the exploration with Water Street Market regarding the possibility of an easement?
Yes, absolutely. I will also explore the possibility, what happens if in fact we put it on that piece of land. But I just say for a reason, I just want us all feel that having an easement in fact would satisfy the requirement. I have no expertise on that.
I can appreciate the zoning board's concern about ADA and since we're talking about parking spaces, it seemed natural. However, I believe that the obligation for the, again, this applicant is not seeking a variance from ADA, which no board of the village can grant. So with that in mind, the planning board is expressly on the hook for providing compliant and with the most current regulations in force. Yeah, there you are immediately. So I understood that, because we were talking so much about parking, I understood, I could appreciate the board's concern about the accessible parking spaces and then the move into this establishment. But because we're not seeking any variance and we can't from ADA parking spaces, the planning board must deal with that and if as a placeholder, the board may wish to include that in any decision it makes that would have the project returned to the planning board, but I can promise you that they must do that and typically the building inspector and if necessary, counsel could advise us on what is necessary.
We appreciate that clarification. What has resulted, however, from our discussion is direction for Mr. Sacker. Whether it's with this board or with the planning board, important issues have been raised. Some sense of direction to him has been given and I'm more than satisfied that this has been a productive meeting.
Might I suggest, Carl, since there's been so much confusion that you as the chair of the ZBA communicate with the chair of the planning board?
Oh, yes.
That this board is concerned with ADA components? And I appreciate the planning board...
I will be happy to do that and I had already planned it.
And given that you can have 100% lot coverage in the Gateway District, do those parking requirements apply?
Oh, there, something did occur to me regarding the parking requirements in the Gateway District. That is, that all parking would have to be behind the existing businesses.
You mean by process of elimination of the possibilities or by code?
No, I'm, that seems to me something I remember about the design of the Gateway District.
Okay, well, it isn't, most of our districts now ask, again, moving away from
Street parking.
The automobile era, if it's already peaked. Then most of our, we encourage parking at the side and the rear of buildings in almost every district with the exception of single-family homes and...
So in other words, if the shopping center that Dedrick's is in now was being built today, the buildings would be at street, at sidewalk and the parking would be behind?
Precisely.
Wow.
Yeah.
We would look like an entirely different village, wouldn't we?
That's right, it'd be a continuation, almost a seamless continuation of Main Street into the town of New Paltz and the easterly direction. And you can see how things change quickly. In fact, I noted to the planning board at the last meeting that I think it's clear that some of the places in the B1, which approaches the town line on Main Street, where there isn't any on-street parking or municipal parking, there can be some extremely competitive situations in some of those parking lots. Some business owners, I see, putting up signs saying, please, only parking for my business here. And obviously, that, so they're taking it upon themselves trying to correct that situation, which was a miscalculation of the demand for parking in some of these small shopping centers.
I have a feeling we've gone about as far as we can go tonight. Unless there is something else to be said, I would look for a motion to return it. So move, second?
Second.
Before I ask for the vote, I want to thank our planner... Before I ask for the vote, I want to thank our planner and our liaison person from the Trustee for their important and substantive and useful input. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, we stand adjourned.